This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the CRA meeting of August 25, 2025 to order. Ricardo, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Steven Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkinson. Lance Smith.
Here.
Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggar.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody to turn your phones off. And Ms. Hamilton will get started. We have the first, well, I guess, business item 1.1 is approval of the CRA meeting minutes from May the 12th. Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. 1.2, approval of CRA meetings of June 23, 2025. May I have a motion? Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any need? All, motion approved. Ms. Hamilton, you're on. Draft budget.
Um, Ted, um, we sent our finance director. Sorry. Thank you. Ted and I will walk you through the budget. Do you have the budget on there? So the big things that the CRA, and before we start talking about that and Ricardo is looking for it to pull up, I want to remind the CRA board that the CRA is a special district. We do everything that we can to make not only the CRA board members, but also the public realize that this is not the city council. When you are sitting as the CRA board, you are looking at a defined area. And your job per statute is to look for the best ideas, projects, things that can improve the district. We said back in, what was it, '89, that the area was slum and blighted. And everything the CRA does is to try and alleviate the slum and blight in the defined area. Okay. Here we go. So the things that we, on capital. Okay. Payroll. Keep going. One more. There we go. Capital outlight, these are the things that the board, we've talked about this, you've seen it in the budget before, but we are looking at land acquisition this year at $477,000. Infrastructure, now when we say infrastructure, those are our capital projects. Can you go up one more? I'm sorry, the other way. Okay. I've got it in here. There it is. So when we talk about infrastructure, it's the 8th Street and Oak Side neighborhood improvements. That is the improvements to 8th Street connecting the backyard to 5th Avenue and to the new Clock Plaza, backyard renovation, our land acquisition, parking entrance signage. So I want to tell you that it is out to bid now. We, the bid date is the 19th of September. The renovations at Clock Plaza.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What, which project's out to bid now?
The park signage.
When did you say it was going to come in?
Park and entrance signage?
Yes. You know, it's rolled over from, we will get the bids, but it won't be spent until after October, so we've rolled the money over.
Bids will come in September 19.
Okay. I thought you said that the bid's coming in January 19.
Oh, I'm sorry. September 19.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have a sore throat and I got a piece of candy in my mouth. The renovation of Clock Plaza, we have, in your packet tonight, there is design, scope of services, sidewalk development. We are looking at developing the sidewalk in the district. We are building sidewalks, but we also have sidewalks that are damaged or need repair, and that money is for that. The 6th Avenue alleyway enhancement, again, is part of the backyard project. Once 6th Avenue is done, they are going to redo, as part of that project, they will redo the alleyway from 5th to 6th. We will come in and put in enhancements. The idea is to try and connect the city parking lot to, and the library parking lot to 5th Avenue. Give people a way, a safe pedestrian way to walk through the alleyway to 5th Avenue.
Okay.
Questions on the budget?
So the acquisition of land, that is, you don't have anything specific right now.
That is correct.
That is to look through and.
So if we have the opportunity to purchase land to help a development, to try and assemble some land, we have the funds to do it.
Okay. When you say infrastructure, is that these projects down here that you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
The 2 million, 2.669? Okay. And then, okay, that's all. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay.
You asked my question.
Okay.
No. Now, we will bring this back, the CRA must do an proclamation or an ordinance, I'll get a resolution.
Okay.
Making a recommendation to the city council for approval.
Do you need a motion now, or just?
No.
Okay.
This was just information. So our next item is the Jeffrey House re-roof. So tonight I have Will from Planning, he is our Historic Preservation Planner, if you've not met Will. There you are.
Hey, Will.
Kern's Family Construction is here. We had, actually, we went to the Jeffreys' house to do an inspection of the windows. We inspected the windows, Will. Thank you. And while we were there, the roof came up, and the roof was in such disrepair that we decided to bring this up to you first.
Is the building leaking?
There is leaking in the building, yes. And I came in 2014, and the roof had been done when Eileen Herman owned the building before that. It has not been done since. So there is leakage, there's problems with the roof, some of the panels are pulling And I'm no, I have no, I have no idea about roofing, but Kern's, Tony and Kent went up and looked at it, Will looked at it, and the recommendation is that it needs to be replaced. They're going to replace it with Galvalume and these.
Which is, what is Galvalume?
Okay.
It's a aluminum product. Metal.
Okay.
All right.
It's the same as what's there.
Okay.
And the only difference is that the city manager asked us to consider doing the type that is, if the ridges covered the screws, yes? That's what you.
That's better.
So that you do not see them, and it lessens the wear on the screws.
If we do it with the exposed screws, you're, what, every six months to a year, you're supposed to go back and reseal those, the fasteners? So if you do the standing seam or where they're covered, you don't have to do that as often, or ever, really. So reduce the.
So when the screws, mine is, the screws are all showing, but I had it redone six years ago. So you're saying I was supposed to go up there six months and tighten them on?
Re-seal them, should.
That, that is the recommendation, and I will tell you that we had, staff had a lot of conversation.
A lot of screws.
Our Public Works Director, our contractor, Will, the Preservation Planner, and staff is making the recommendation that it be approved with the caveat that tomorrow night Historic Preservation Board is meeting, and we want them to approve this as well. So once they are, they review it and approve it.
You want us to approve it tonight?
I do want.
Did, did.
Contingent on their approval.
Did you take the building official with you when you did the inspections?
Didn't I take the building official? No, I did not.
I would have, I would recommend that anytime we do any kind of building inspections, that we take a building official with us.
You're right. You're right. And, and we were up there looking at windows and just got started.
Yeah, I get that. You know, I don't know when this roof is done. Metal roof should last a little longer than 10 years, though.
No, no. It was, it was there when she came.
Oh, when she came.
When it came.
It was on already.
We could not find a permit for it. That's how long.
Yeah, I didn't remember when, when it was all, well.
Maybe she didn't pull one.
Well, that's true.
When they first did it, but.
But if you would like, we can certainly have Calvin go and look at it and give us.
You know, sometimes we can make some repairs instead of replacing the whole roof. I mean, I see some rusty spots, obviously, that's, you know, not good, and if there's leaking, but it just seems like, I don't know.
We are responsible for it, and I mean, the.
Yeah, we do have to maintain it, too. That's the other thing.
Yeah. And the, the idea is, do we do it now, or do we do it and wait until there is a problem? We are coming up on hurricane season, and the idea of, you know, the panels coming off and, and creating more of a problem was discussed, but however the board wants to handle it, we'll have.
Well, why don't we ask Calvin to go up there and look at it?
Okay.
And we can approve it tonight, contingent on Calvin and the Historic Preservation Board approval.
Okay.
And that way, if everything's okay, then we can just keep going, and if not, then it can come back to us, and maybe at a council meeting, so we're not waiting a month.
That's right.
Right. And the other thing is, sometimes the lead time on that Galvalume stuff is a little bit down the road, too, so we need to have that consideration.
Probably be tariffs, too.
Just.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, do we know how many squares this is? I'd just like to idea on how much that is per square. Because typically on a roofing quote, you'd get, there's a number of squares there.
I have a question, too. So this is awarded based on, we have a continuing contract with different contractors and engineers. Do we get prices on this from others, or is this?
Anything under the, the continuing services contract was written for construction services. Anything over $75,000, we have to get multiple prices on. That's how it's written.
If it's not 75, if it's less than that, you can, you can pick?
Yes.
Out of the four companies that we have continuing contracts with.
We have four contractors.
This is me personally, but if it was my house, I would get more than one price.
I got three.
I'm good with that.
Let's get a couple prices from roofers and just see what it is, if we can.
Okay. We'll get that, and we'll bring it back to the next meeting. We don't have to wait till CRA, we can bring it back to September?
I'd like to bring it to the first meeting in September if we can, so we're not dragging this out. By then Calvin will be in there, the Historic Board will look at it, and we'll have.
And we'll have some more information. Is that good?
That's great.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
You mean, so you want to bring it directly to City Council?
Right. Well, we could probably do a five-minute board.
CRA meeting ahead.
Fire.
Yeah. I would prefer if we did it that way.
All right. We can do that like, we can schedule that at 5:45 maybe, and then do the regular meeting in six, something like that. So I don't want to wait a month.
Right.
Much to the way it's been raining.
Right. I appreciate that. You're good with that?
Is there a motion, are we going to continue this item to the, to that date certain, or are we?
I'd move to continue this item until we get the items we spoke about. Have a short CRA meeting before the next council.
All right. And that is September the 8th.
I second.
8th or 9th?
8, let me, 8, I don't know. 8.
Okay.
I think. 8, okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll have that, staff will have that information back to you beforehand. Founder's Day. The CRA was asked to place this on the agenda to discuss moving the date for Founder's Day this year. In the past, it has always been, and I can say this, you know, it's the Saturday closest to the 10th without going past the 10th. And, and, you know, some people take it very seriously. We changed it one year, and there was some unhappy folks because we had changed the date. So we are, this was asked to be placed on the agenda to see how, what council wants, or the CRA board wants to do. The, this year's barbecue and blues is on the fourth Saturday of February, and Founder's Day is essentially the first Saturday of March. So that puts two large events back to back. There's the issue of overtime for city staff, and just two big events back to back. So we'd like to get input from the CRA board.
How, how did the, does the chamber come before the city for a site plan for these events?
They, they do a special, just like everybody else, they'll do a special events permit.
Well, how do they pick the day?
Did, did.
We're working around the fair weekend.
So, I'm sorry. Can you come up?
Vicki Wiggins, 38550, 5th Avenue. We, we actually didn't even think about Founder's Day, but we were looking at the broader schedule of Pasco County Fair, because that's where a lot of our volunteers go to work. And then we were also trying to get it a little further away from Kung Quat Festival. So, and then we, we talked about the date in different meetings, but never.
That should be clear to us.
Founder's Club wasn't, or Founder's Day wasn't part of the conversation, will be in the future, but it wasn't this past time.
Well, because this is going to happen every year.
Yeah.
So.
Right. So.
And I, I get, I get, we don't want two events back to back. I get, you got to get it away from the Kung Quat Festival for as far as the chamber concerned, and also the Pasco County Fair. But the reason we had to move before, because it was just an oversight thing, when we had to move it that one, one year. And then it came on the same day. Now, I'm not opposed to moving Founder's Day at all, because I just, I never could understand that. It has to be the first Saturday before the 10th, or whatever crazy thing that was. I don't have a problem with adjusting the date, but it's going to be this way from now on, I would say. So.
Yeah. It's going to be an ongoing issue.
And I, I have a question. You know, is there any way to pull these two things together into one big event? Have your Founder's Day parade the night before? You know, use the vendors, and then the other, I mean, and make it, we talked about that before.
We have.
Making it the big.
And, and you know from personal experience, the issue is, it's a fundraiser for both organizations.
Yeah, but you guys, I know on the Main Street have said year after year that you don't make any money off of Founder's Day, basically, that it's.
That's always the hope.
That, right, you always hope. But I'm saying that it's always been an issue, that, you know, that's been, and yes, you're right, you'd have to figure that out. But it seems like there's got to be a way, especially if it's going to merge every year.
Yeah, if it's going to be an issue every year.
To, to pull this.
And, and I'll be honest with you, I am, I mean, I sit on the board as an ex officio, and Antoine and Linda both are here tonight that can speak on it other than just me. When we changed it to June.
Yeah.
When was that?
That was 2021.
Yeah, during COVID.
But that was COVID.
COVID. During COVID.
Well, I'm working with a group that's planning a car show at the depot, a historic car show on, and, and we had talked about moving Founder's Day to March 28th, because Founder's Day always falls on the opening.
Little League.
Little League.
And so either the kids don't come, or they run down there, and that's part of the problem. So we were thinking, move it all to that date. But I, and I have no problem with changing the date. I mean, it's still in March.
I mean, it's, Main Street has an agreement with the CRA City Council to do five events a year. If we change something, we need your input. Plus, I want to be able to say to social media, the CRA approved it.
But, so I, I think, you know, I think it would behoove us to do that at least this year, and see how everything pans out, and then go from there. But I don't like the city being on its heels and have to rearrange things because the chamber didn't think ahead, or was thinking only of their events, and working around to date city event.
Mr. Chair, wasn't the chamber supposed to keep a calendar for us as part of the deal? What happened with that? Yeah, but didn't we always say it was the first Saturday after whatever Gail said? I mean.
Right. Right. Yeah.
I mean, that was kind of, it should have been on the calendar.
Passed it.
So I think that. I don't, do you all have a problem changing it to 28?
No, but we need to keep it consistent. If we do it, we need to do it.
We need to be consistent.
Right.
We need to coordinate, and we need not to be the afterthought. And I also, you know, I've not brought this up before, but I'm not really happy with some of the changes that have been made to the Pigs in the Hills anyway. I, I don't like that it's downtown. I don't like that the barbecue section's gone. We prepared and spent money at that site out at the airport specifically for that. We put in electric and water and a stage, and then if just not convenient, so it changes. So I think that there needs to be thought about how that's done, and how we participate in these things. Because we're not really asked, we're just kind of told, well, this is what we're doing now, and this is how we're doing it, this is where it is. And after last year, there was, I mean, there wasn't even any barbecue, you know? So, you know, I, I think it needs to have much more discussion on when and where and how it's done. So.
I agree.
So, so if y'all are all in agreement, we'll save the fourth Saturday of March for Founder's Day 2026. We'll make it work. It'll be fine.
Yeah. I think that's good. And, you know, we, we've been, the group I've been working with has already been hoping that we could make an arrangement. I didn't know Founder's Day, I didn't know that the Pigs in the Hills was changing, but when we were talking about this. But I think we should do it this way, and this way we, we have plenty of time to start marketing it, explain what we're doing and why, tying it into the car show. We want to have cars in the parade that will advertise that. But we want to do it in a way that everybody didn't leave here and go down there. So we got to.
Yeah.
We've got to work, you know, we have to plan this better.
Well, and we'll take this back to the Promotions Committee. But again, since we have a contract, our agreement to do five, and so I don't think in talking, we've not said that it would be an issue, correct? We've got it on the calendar. We'll have to change the calendar, but we can make it work.
Was it still, was it going to be the old time or the new time? I remember last, didn't, last year we changed the time for the parade, and that kind of got all crazy, too, or? So what, what time thing were we looking at this year?
I mean.
And it doesn't.
Yep. I'm sorry.
Before you say this.
Antoine Gilden, Main Street. Some of these questions haven't been answered yet, especially now with a new date. Obviously, I think back in, back a few years ago, there was some discussion, because at nighttime, you had some of the people who were entering the parade who didn't have vehicles that had lights on them. I think that was one of the big things about, one of the reasons. And then it was moved back to the daytime parade, which last year was a daytime parade. I don't think that it's come up yet so far about what time. It's more about just trying to make sure we put the best event out that we can.
With the, with the addition of entertainment, it was going to be entertainment at night parade, just like we've always done during the day.
Do you know, last year it seemed like there were more people. Did you feel that?
Yes. I think when we added a car show and had a music performance.
Yeah.
And, and not instead of the parade, but obviously, we were looking to have that be a part plus the parade. But I think having that, not only were there probably more people, but there was also more people staying longer. Because in the past, when we've had the parade, people have left. Once the parade has been over, so having like something that kind of lasts throughout the day, added a little bit more of a, hey, I can stay down here for, for more time.
Yeah.
And, and I will speak, and Antoine and I have talked about this. Founder's Day has got to evolve. It can't just be.
Agreed.
Parade and vendors on the street. We have got to evolve it. We've got to make it better, and we've got to entice more people to come downtown. The idea of having a named entertainment to bring people downtown was discussed with the Promotions Committee, and they were pretty excited about it. So, yes, I think, you know, change is good. It's not always, you know, people get upset about it, but it won't hurt us.
Listen, people are going to get upset, and they're going to complain.
But then they don't show up. That's right. So.
Or they say they don't know about it.
They, or they don't know about it, even though it's been out there for six months.
Do you think we could try to get somebody like the Bellamy Brothers or something?
We are looking at, I am making contacts with several other cities that do. We aren't looking at, um, I am making contacts with several other cities that do large, uh, entertainment acts, and asking them, um, for information about their bookers, because they have, uh, you know, an entertainment booking, uh, company that you have to go through. So we're looking at that and trying to get, uh, dollar amounts, but I agree with you, we need something like.
Right.
You know, a name, name person.
Yeah, I agree, and, you know, we could offset that cost somehow.
That's exactly right, we think we can get a good sponsor for it.
I do, I think you could, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'm not sure what the name is, but.
Yeah, do we need a motion to change the date, would you like a motion?
Yes, I would like a motion, please.
Could we have a motion then, to change the date to three twenty-eight, twenty-six?
I'll, I'll make a motion, but before I do that, just, just, I just looked up the Pasco County School Calendar, just out of interest to see, but spring break is that following that weekend, so I don't know if there's just something that, I'm just throwing it out there, so if there's any discussion on that. So it shouldn't really affect anything, but people could be going downtown, I guess, but, I mean.
Is it starting that weekend or?
Well, it starts, it, it starts, they actually have days off because it's end of the quarter, and then they just have a couple more days of fall week. It probably shouldn't affect anything, but I just wanted to make you aware of it while we're doing.
We need a name.
We need a name.
We need a big name.
So, can I get them, I mean, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the, uh, approve, uh, moving Founder's Day parade to March tw- or March Founder's Day, I should say, to March, uh, twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no opposed, motion message passes unanimously.
Okay, next item. Discussion of Alice Hall location. Again, uh, we need to decide Stephanie's direction. We had initially, when the plans were designed, uh, the community meetings that we had with the Parks and Rec Board and the public, Alice Hall was not included, the idea was that Alice Hall would have, uh, its own location. We have not considered it current permit, we are in construction plans right now, we're in, uh, forty percent construction plans. If you want to do it, if you want Alice Hall, it's at Zephyr Park, we'll make it fit, we'll make it work. It will delay the project, we will have to amend the, uh, plan. Now, from the CRA standpoint, and I said it in my memo, the idea that the city is, is making such large investments in the city, it's a wonderful thing. We have not made any investment on the south side of town. Having, um, it, having the building on the south end of town would provide an investment on that end. Coming into town from the south end's not really attractive. Um, and trying to create some kind of image that we are trying to project of our city on the south side would be a wonderful thing. But it's your decision, whatever you want, we'll, we'll take it forward, but right now, we do not have a plan for a building, what size it's going to be, no, um, what did you call it, Shane? Yeah, or the create design, we don't have a design.
Spatial needs analysis.
Yes, the spatial design, we don't have a spatial design. Um, so let it, tell us what you want, and that's what we'll do.
How, let me ask Shane a question. How many acres is Shepherd Park, do you know off the top of your head?
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. I don't know the approximate, um, acreage, I think City Manager Poe and I checked it one time, was it fifteen? Okay.
It's just a little under fifteen.
Ain't no way that's fifteen acres, guys.
Well, not.
Well, you can look it up.
Might be two or three.
I'd have to look it up.
Come on, boys.
Well, let me ask, um.
That ain't fifteen acres.
Well, you know.
Then you get five.
The east part of it, along three oh one, floods pretty good.
Right.
Um, my feeling, I think Alice Hall Community Center should be at Zephyr Park.
I agree.
And what I was thinking is, um, don't go away, we might, we might aid you, is, um, put the built, new building to the west of the current building. And if the current building comes down, and the Wickstrom stage comes down, you're going to have that open area that you need for the view into the park from the road, and you're also going to have, I guess flooding, stormwater areas that can work there. And if the building's moved to the west, then, uh, it looks like it's still pretty level. And then it, it's kind of in a corner, and maybe you can cut that out, continue with the plan, and just redo that one, the northwest corner.
Can I interject real quick, it's two point four two acres.
Two point four, okay.
So, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I feel like it's not in the plans, because it kept being told, we'll talk about it later. This is why it's not in the plans, I don't think it's, the community had anything to say about it. I think that's kind of what happened, is we kept saying, we're, we'll talk about it later. Um, so, you know, uh, each one of the guys, these guys are going to talk about the pluses and minuses, for sure, of, you know, what they feel like is the best avenue for this.
And, and we'll take it forward whenever you want.
Well, is it possible, I mean, the only problem I had when I drove out there to kind of look around, was that there's some old trees to the west of the building.
That's, that's what I was going to say, that there'd be some grand oaks that would be in conflict.
But I, I don't think Shepherd Park's large enough, and the parking would be, half of it would be underwater sometimes.
Right.
And, um, I, I, you know, I, I just think if that's the crown jewel, then we got to do some things to keep it that way and keep more people there. So, in the plans, is there anything planned for that area, do you know, right now?
Well, um, that's the, that is the entrance, that area is the entrance, but it can be moved, can be moved.
Yeah, what's in that area right now is, uh, parking and landscaping, yeah.
Yeah, well, first of all, I, I feel that, I like your idea of putting it, but I'd like to put it in front of the tennis courts. That, that land, that portion is always high and dry, I've never seen it flood. And it's also our voting precinct, where everyone votes. So I think putting it out at Shepherd's Park would confuse a lot of people, but personally, I feel that the best spot would be right in front of the tennis courts.
Um, and we'll have to go back and, and change the master plan, that is CRA property, and the CRA purchased it for, um, commercial development. And it, it's always been waiting for the park to, to be done. So, that is CRA property, and the master plan specifically calls for it to be developed, so not that it can't be changed, we can change it.
Well, and that's about four acres, right? If I remember correctly.
The Hopper property.
Yeah, the Hopper property, you know, I don't know off the top of my head.
Three lots.
I remember when we bought it, um.
That's about three lots.
An acre only, jeez.
Well, and then the other thing is, it wouldn't have to change the Zephyr Park plan. That's a whole separate, so you would not have to worry about the construction dots being changed either, if you did that.
And, and I think that's true, but I, I just envisioned this, this center looking out over and onto like a little bit of a formal garden, onto the, onto the lake, with some type of a porch where you could have a wedding if you wanted to in the formal garden, that would be closed off during the times when it was being used for it. If we oriented it on that piece of property, you'd be looking at the back of tennis courts, and we're hearing some people in Hillsborough County complaining about the noise on the pickleball courts in the community, so, I mean.
Well, we hear noise, I get complaints in Silver Oaks about noise from the tennis.
Right, but, but I, I just, I mean, I can see a building sitting there oriented towards the west, looking out onto gardens, which we're going to do landscaping anyway. I, I think, I mean, I, I think it could be a really nice thing, I think we could minimize the amount of trees coming out of there. I ju, I mean, there's a lot of pluses, and I understand wanting to put it at the south end of town, because the south end of town needs some help. We were talking, just talking, what, you know, thought about putting it on the, um, the, the old theater in the middle of.
That's right.
Uh, you know, on the second floor of that, so, I mean, there's a lot of things you could think, but the more I thought about it, I'm like, you know what, Zephyr Park is where it should be. Where add in there, and they've got the plans going, it, it, it may delay it a little bit, but it, you know, it's, it's not. We need to take the time to put it where we think it's the best, even if it takes a little more time.
You know, what we had talked about once before was, um, paving over the, uh, Lake Necessity, building a platform over it.
Parking garage.
Yeah, but what if we paved over it and put a community center there, that was part of our complex?
There's just no part.
Well, it could be a part of it. That would be expensive, I guess.
Anything's possible, but I would think some type of piling construction like that would be.
Never mind.
That's one point six two acres. One and a half acres there.
But I love the idea of creating.
That is.
Part of this complex, you know, that you continue on with the idea of this complex. Um, and with the advent of the new, um, bus terminal, that's going to be built right down the street, but we'll come up with something else. But if, if staff, I mean, if the CRA wants staff to move forward with this, we can go back to, uh, James and Kimberly Horn and, um, have them.
Sketch something in.
Sketch, sketch something, and give you some input on trees and parking and all of that.
Well, I have a question for, and before I even say my part of it is, um, how, how does the Parks and Recreation Commission, or whatever we call them, meet?
Oh, you mean the advisory board?
The advisory board, how often they meet, who calls the meetings, what?
Shane.
I'll step in.
Okay.
And, and I talked to the city manager about this, I'm sure he probably gave you guys a heads up, which I was hoping he would do. Because I, I was speaking to someone that's on that, and he said, you know, he's talking about the park, we're talking about a Parks Master Plan, we're talking about all the different parks, stuff like that, and they haven't met for like a year? I mean, a lot of the, well, even if, even if, so how many times in, in the last year? I mean, even if it's, um, like all the stuff we're discussing right now, those things can be kind of hashed out. I put a lot of thought, I mean, a lot of thought in what the commissions bring to us, planning commission, all of them. I think that's what they're there for, and a lot of this stuff could have been kind of discussed, uh, much more extensively than us trying to do it right now. We don't have a plan, and I like the idea of, of Steve came up with of, is, we just carved that part out. It's not going to stop anything from being done there, just put a big line around it, that part's not being done yet. I would, I do like the idea of putting it on Fifth Avenue too, though, I think, in front of tennis courts, but I see a good point that, uh, that Lance came up with, was, you know, let's utilize the entire park for that thing, so, I mean, there, but these are all things that we're trying to throw together now. And we could have been, you know, we're doing a park master plan, we're, we're talking about parks, and we're, and we're just now kind of somewhat discussing this. I think we need to utilize that, uh, that advisory board, they should, I'm not saying they should meet monthly, but they should have been meeting monthly during this whole process.
So I'll, I'll step in, because I did, we did have the conversation, and I did talk with, with Gail and Shane. The, the committee met five months ago, I don't think Dave was at that meeting, I think he had a conflict. But there was discussion with the master plan, and from my recollection, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, the plans always showed Alice Hall not being there, and so there were conversations of, hey, where does Alice Hall need to go? And it's kind of been.
But that's what I'm saying, during this process, they should have been meeting monthly or something on this, more than just one time a while ago.
Right.
I mean, because there's, there's a lot of things that needed to be discussed, obviously.
Right, well, so they met, we got the, the master plan, the Parks Master Plan, or not the Parks.
Hey, we could, we could still just tell them to go pound sand and whatever they come up with, I, I'm not saying that we have to go by what they say. I'm just saying that that's, that's what they're there for, it shouldn't be coming before us now to try and get this figured out.
Yeah, no.
At the last second.
I understand that, we had the master plan, we thought we had direction, they've been working on the design, so there was, there wasn't a reason to have the Parks Rec Board meet, because they were working on construction plans based on the meetings that they'd already had. Then the conversation had come up, where are we putting Alice Hall, and that's been the last month and a half, two months, probably.
Well, I guess, what I think, what I think, now, so a Commissioner Burgess is saying is, maybe when we had the workshop on the plan, they should have been invited. I, I think we're not engaging them enough, and, and we need to do that more, I think, that's what we're trying to say.
And, and just to defend, um, the CRA and the city, we, uh, Gail Hamilton and I have discussed that we're about to have an upcoming meeting for the, um.
The final master plan of the park, park master plan is done, and it's going to be, uh, presented and, um, to council, and have them as part of the meeting.
We need to have, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We were going to invite them to the meeting, and to answer Commissioner Burgess's question, I coordinate the Parks and Rec Board on a as needed, we don't meet.
Yeah, I get you're not going to meet or anything like that, but that's. With all this talk of parks and all this stuff going on the last year, and even with Hercules, and I know they met before that too, I, I'm not saying that anybody's at fault here, and we've had citizen engagement things on the parks too, so we have had that. I'm just saying that some of this stuff could be kind of hashed out a little bit there, so we have a little better, you know, a little better understanding.
And I like your, I mean, we thought from the staff's side that you would want to, you sitting as the CRA slash City Council, would want to make the decision on Alice Hall, and not an advisor.
No, that's what I'm saying, we just, but I just put a lot of stock in what those advisory boards say, and I'm interested in what the community has to say, so.
Yeah, and I, well, go ahead, you've been.
No, no, go ahead. I don't feel that, um, wherever we put Alice Hall, which I hope it's close to where it is now, how is that, I don't see where that's going to stop any production on the park itself. It's like, I think, I don't know which one of us said it, but we just mark off where it's going.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I think that, I don't understand how, but I think the mayor had a point in that, you know, Alice Hall was never really a part of it, I mean, we didn't even include funding for it, and we knew we were going to do something. So somehow it got put on a back burner, and we let it, and you have to defend yourself, we're not attacking.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
They made it like that, I was, I was trying to help her out.
We're just, you know, we're just, you know, trying to.
We're doing our due diligence.
Yeah.
I understand.
Listen, as, I think, as the city grows and we start doing more and more and more, these are growing pains, and how we figure out, you know, how things are done, and how you want them done, so.
Well, let's try to set up, I think, I'm getting a consensus that we think that the Parks Board should sit down and maybe look at the plans that were presented at that meeting in July, and then ask them to sketch in something, maybe one here and one here, and show us, but I agree, I don't, I don't think it should back up to the tennis courts, that's.
Well, I mean, I didn't mean right up.
Well, I know, I know, I know, but you know what I mean, yeah.
There's so much land, and there's so many different ways it could go out there, it really is quite a bit of options.
Some stuff and, and have you look at it.
We can do two stories, maybe.
That, that was the other, the other thing I was going to bring up, is we, let's not hold ourselves to one story, there's, there could be some flexibility with a two-story building.
I think it would be a lot more used as well.
Yeah, yeah, so, and we could have like a, maybe a larger room, and then a couple of meeting rooms, or different things, and a couple, you know, things like that. But there's nothing to say we can't go two stories and take up less of.
A footprint.
Here's the thing, it's got to be able to hold at least two hundred people. Our city, our size, should not be having events outside of our city, because we have no place to have them here. So it has to hold at least two hundred people, you know, it can be, you can bring in things to close it off in between, and use it for other things, but we have to have a place, it's, it's embarrassing when I get calls and I have to send them to Dade City. I send everybody to have an event in Dade City, and that doesn't make sense anymore for a city our size, for sure. So, that's, that's just my strong opinion, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing with that, um, when we start working with the design team, we'll have to do an RFQ for design, um, well, yeah, and we'll definitely involve the. And we'll definitely involve the CRA Commission and the city council for input, updates. Do you like it? Do you don't like it? One story, two story? We just went out to security financing. We did a um, six thousand square foot building to get a cost estimate from an architect, but it doesn't have to be six thousand square foot. And I think we're covered under the cost that we've received.
Good. Thank you.
All right, all right, thanks.
So just as, as a clarification, so as we work on the design of Alice Hall, do you want us to take it to the Parks Advisory Board and have them have input on the design of Alice Hall?
Wouldn't hurt to have a meeting to have.
Well, I think they need to see the park plans and you presented that in July.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
I was, I missed that meeting, but.
They saw the, the design of it before forty percent. So we're at forty percent, so we'll, we'll absolutely.
I would just update them on the design of it and all that. No, I come to the meet, although Kevin helped me catch that, but um, yeah, I think that's good. Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
We'll schedule, schedule a meeting.
Wanna say something?
Yeah.
Uh, Will McCaw, I'm the Historic Preservation Planner for y'all. Um, I did wanna make one comment and regarding the location of Alice Hall. I live in Newport Ritchie and commute all the way over, taking fifty-four as far as I can. That entrance to the city, coming off fifty-four, if we move Alice Hall further west, I think obstructs one of the best features and one of the biggest placemaking features we have as a city, and that is Zephyr Lake and the community park as a whole. So I would caution against placing Alice Hall further west because it may end up blocking what is essentially going to be the view shed for people coming into the city as the grand entrance to establish the city.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Can I, you're doing your CRA report now?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question? And um, I, I wanna go back to the Jeffrey's house.
Okay.
I brought this up, but is it fair to get quotes from other people once that quote is out? I mean, that's public record now.
Good point.
That's not fair when they've already, you know, I mean, I'm shooting myself in the foot for wanting quotes, but that's not really fair.
Well, I believe that should have been thought of before. I mean, it's just common sense.
I will tell you that we did look at um, standing seam roofs on two-story buildings to, and homes, and it was in line with everyone that I looked at, including our city manager, who got a bid on his home for a standing seam roof. And so we looked at prices and it was in line. I don't have to.
Somebody the disadvantage after.
No, but you're right.
We can check.
You certainly bring up a good point, but from a. I mean.
I mean, it's not gonna be hard for somebody to look at the agenda and come in and say they'll do it for thirty-five cent and then.
Right, right.
I mean, I just don't think it's fair now that.
I mean, I think that's a valid point, but, and under the, under the revised statute, we can do these continuing services, construction agreements for things under, you know, there's two different levels and two different tiers of price. So we're not required to go out the bid. If you wanna get quotes to check the price, I guess, is one thing, but it, you know, I'll defer. I, I don't think that's a legal question, really. It's more of a.
Ethical.
Well, well, it's more of a, just a management decision, what you wanna do, a city decision.
I think that maybe we start from here on, we get some quotes, even if it's under, just, just so we know. And maybe leave this alone because I don't think it's right to do it now that we've.
I mean, I think it'd probably be wise for it to be common practice to, even if you're not putting it out the bid, go get quotes and if it's, you know, if there is a discrepancy, maybe you put it out the bid. Instead of going with continuing service.
Yeah, especially on something like that because it wouldn't take nothing for some roofing contractor to quote a price on that. It would be.
They could do it in their office.
Yeah, they wouldn't even have to.
Yeah.
Leave the building, right?
So maybe going forward, you know, you could, you could always get a quote without going out the bid, just to get an idea of what things are gonna cost and get quotes from our continuing service individuals. I think there's, I don't know that all, the problem is, I, I think we kind of have some for different types of specialties, so.
Right.
Right.
It's not like you can go get four on roofers and they all be continuing service qualified.
And if you want them formally, I mean, we staff did call and, and ask for, but they weren't formal. It was just checking prices to see if they were, you know, if we were in the ballgame. But if you want them.
Well, I think that's what we, you need to do since, since you have the continuing agreements, but um.
Yeah, that's no problem. We can do them.
You know, call three of those people and get some prices or ideas, then you're, then you, then you know you're getting something in the ballpark. But Ricardo, can you tell me what we did on that album? Did we make a motion?
Yeah, you did to the.
You continued it to the September eighth meeting. A short meeting, a short CRA meeting, about five forty-five on September eighth.
Can we revisit that?
Tonight, you mean? Sure.
Um, do you want, but the other part was you wanted it reviewed by Calvin.
Well, we want those two parts, but I'm thinking the other parts should, I don't think it's right to do that when this is sitting right here on our website.
It's up to you.
Does anybody have anything?
So you'd have to have a motion to bring it back.
Would it, would it, does it change anything if we're gonna, are we gonna hear from Calvin in two weeks? I mean, is it gonna?
You can just vote on it then and we'll, and we'll just drop the, the.
Yeah, it's all you did.
The other quotes.
You, you gave direction, but your vote was to table it and the motion was to table it. The direction wasn't really a part of the vote.
Yeah.
Well, I, I didn't like it that there was not a specified amount of square footage on the roof, square number of squares.
And I had that in my notes. Forget that.
I, I can't tell if that's a good price or not. I mean, I don't know.
I would.
And you understand that.
So we'll bring back that information as well. We'll bring back that information, Calvin's report, square footage.
And I'm not saying it's not a fair price. I just don't know.
Right. Um, so we'll do that. It'll be clean and clear and, and again, um, we'll make the uh, calls that I made on checking prices, we'll put them in the agenda items, so you have them. Okay?
Thank you very much. I apologize for.
No, no, no.
No, that's right.
No, you brought up a good point.
Good point.
Good point.
You actually did.
And I honestly, um, CRA staff is trying to get things pushed out faster, so maybe I, you know, we need to make it a little more um.
No.
No, don't slow down.
It wasn't on you. No, that wasn't on you. Don't worry about that.
Okay.
That wasn't on you, so don't worry.
So um, CRA, I just have a couple of things because I promised Antoine he would have time tonight. We've already talked about the park signage and entrance signs. The bids are due September nineteenth. The Zephyr Park Construction Manager at Risk, con, uh, RMQ will, bids are, are qualifications are the same on September nineteenth. The Zephyr Hills Master Park Plan will come before the city council at their September meeting, the first September meeting. And we will include the Parks Advisory Board, but we will also follow up on the other items that you provided. If I, if there's not any other questions, that is my report and we will turn it over to Antoine.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I am Antoine Gilden with Main Street. Um, there are a couple of things that we'll go through. They'll have some visuals, but if there's any questions afterwards, please feel free to reach out. So it's been a few months since I've been able to stand in front of you guys, so there are some things I'll catch you up on. First and foremost, our social media, we've been putting a big emphasis on growing our Instagram. Um, it's been going on for a while. We've partnered up with a few different options. We now currently have an intern that we share with Kevin. And in the last ninety days, we've actually saw a nine percent increase on our views, which that is at two hundred and forty-seven thousand, um, o, over that. Also followers, we've increased one percent. I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but we're at sixteen thousand, so one percent is still great for me or us. Um, and Instagram, um, we've had twenty-four thousand views and also increase of, um, it's not two thousand followers, I apologize. They didn't make a, break a percentage down, but we have had an increase. I think when we started out, we were at thirteen hundred, so now we're over two thousand. Um, I did wanna put that on there because we do a three-question series and Mallory, our um, uh, Public Information Officer intern, um, did a great three-question series. And if you guys have the opportunity, please go to our Facebook page and check that out. Um, event recap, we have had a pretty eventful summer, um, starting with Kids Fest and the Back to School event. One of the best highlights about everything was we got a lot of news coverage. And I just, unfortunately, I didn't have it when I put this together, but we had over fifty-eight thousand um, views from the news coverage. So um, the city, Main Street Downtown, has had just a positive, positive impact and, and, and been all across um, a lot of different channels. And so we're gonna just try to keep that goodwill going. Obviously, kids and back to school draw some attention, so we're gonna see how we can round this out with some of the great events we have coming up. Um, I hate saying myself up there, but um, I did spend some time in um, Fernandina, I don't wanna say it wrong. Fernandina, I knew that. Fernandina Beach, uh, with other Main Streets at a um, um, it's called a Palms Conference. For some reason, it's lost, it's lost out of my mind what it's actually standing for. Oh, Preservation on Main Street. That's what I was trying to think of. I'm sorry. Yes, it is an annual conference. But the great thing about that was, um, just like when you guys go visit places and see things, yes, I came back so excited and wanted to talk about so many things and wanted to share so many things, so we have something coming up. Oh. Actually, no, but stay right there because this is gonna be a great topic. So I will table what I was gonna say and we're gonna go to this first. Everyone should know by now Halloween Howl will be October twenty-fifth, and we have been spending the, the past couple of weeks um, collaborating with the, the operators of Scream Aggeden. We were actually out there last night. Just getting some input. They're not gonna do anything with our Halloween Howl, but we, we are working with them to try to increase um, the professionalism and the, and the atmosphere that we have at our haunted house downtown. And that's gonna lead to the point that I would like to say, utilizing this slide. I'm sorry, go back. I apologize. No, no, go back to the Halloween Howl. So the Halloween Howl, obviously, Honey House will take place at the theater. And I just wanted to give everyone an update about the theater because it's always a great topic to discuss. So we have been talking with the in, um, architects. We actually met with them last week. And we do have a, we're waiting on um, the final version of the demolition packet. Is that the right wording for it? Packet, uh, which we'll share in the near future. We are hosting the.
Share that prior to demolition? Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
We are hosting the haunted house in there for Halloween. So nothing will be done differently until that particular um, event is over. I would think prior, or the next month moving forward, there'll be a little bit more action that'll take place. But um, yes, we are able to share that in the, in the coming, coming days, I would think. Any questions about that before I move on? And then this is what I was trying to say at the end. So normally when I, when I go to these events, these annual events, they're far away. Our next one is actually in Plant City. And so I would encourage anyone to try to attend some of it. For one, it's a great show of support for you, that you support your Main Street. Um, as you can see, there's a lot of speakers that, that are there throughout the day. Again, it's a short drive over to Plant City. Um, you'll get to see some other Main Street districts. Um, there, there's always board members and directors and council people and, and it just depends on, you know, where, where it's located. But this will take place um, the twenty-ninth through the thirtieth in Plant City, so I just wanted to extend an invite to anyone who's able to attend. And other than that, we are head, heads into our investor drive for this year. So if you happen to see an email or happen to see a flyer, um, it is, we're, we're moving forward. It's been a good response so far. We've only went out through social media, I'm sorry, through email. We're about to start doing actual letters in the coming weeks and we're, we're just excited about how the community is supporting Main Street. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Can you send that information?
Can you send an information about the Plant City thing?
Yes, sir.
And, and just email that flyer or whatever that slide was.
Yes, sir. And I actually have some printed out in my briefcase if anybody wanted to, but I can also, you know, no problem at all.
Thank you. And congratulations on being the um, best of the bay number three in the Main Street.
I am so sorry. I'm sure Kevin is probably going to rough me up after this meeting because yes, we do have a, 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 a certificate that I was supposed to bring up here. And I did not remember, but yes, yes, congratulations to the city and Main Street. Yes, we were selected. I think we were behind Temple Terrace and St. Pete. So the community had to vote on that as well. So that's, you know, a great response from the community. And yes, we are very excited and proud and I apologize to Kevin because this was a lot of work that we did to get this going, so my apologies, Kevin, but yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Good. No questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anything else?
Nope, that is it.
Anyone have anything? Anybody, is anybody in the audience like to say anything? Okay, if not, CRA is adjourned. It's up to you, Nancy.
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, that's a cute one. That's a cute one. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, six P M regular city council meeting. Ricardo, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith. Steven Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson. William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggert.
Here.
All right, uh, if we could all stand for the invocation by Reverend Benjamin from Saint Elizabeth Episcopal Church. Then we'll do the pledge.
Oh, it's not.
My invocation is in three parts, a prayer for the city, prayer for the council members, and a prayer for peace in the world. First, a prayer for the city. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth, especially this our city of Zephyr Hills. and our sister cities, Dead City, San Antonio, Newport Richey, Port Richey and other towns. Send us honest and able leaders that are like those here present and enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. And that both men and women from different cultures with differing difference and tolerance of use may find with one another the fulfillment of their common humanity. Through your Lord and your mercy, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
That was a weak amen. Amen.
Amen.
A prayer for you council members and your staff. Almighty God, send down upon these servants here who hold public office in this city council and the staff members that support them. By name, Dr. Spina, Charles Proctor, Lance Smith, who is absent, who was somewhere around, Jody Wilkerson and Kenneth Burgess and the mayor Melanie and the staff support Ricardo, William and Matthew and their families. Give them the spirit of wisdom, charity and justice that with steadfast purpose and courage and perseverance, they may faithfully serve in their offices and their constituents, promote the well-being of all the people under their care. In your mercy, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
And then for peace in the world. Almighty God, we reach to you as the God of peace. Guide the nations of this world into ways of justice and truth and peace, especially in the places where there are hot wars going on right now in the Middle East, in Southeast Asia, in Ukraine, in Eastern Congo. That all among us and the peacemakers may have their way. That peace, which is a fruit of righteousness and the image of God we bear may become the kingdom that we all dream of. We pray all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. All right. Thank you, Reverend. Very nice prayer. Now we go to citizens comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move forward to the mayor. Madam Mayor.
So the only thing I have on my report is the city manager's evaluation. Each one of you will receive that prior to coming to the meeting. The overall average is we, we evaluated on 10 different categories or 10 different modules. The overall average came in at, oops, I've got the wrong paperwork and my thing locked up. Sorry. Thank you. Mine locked up. Okay, came in at 3.56. And then I also put in there the individual evaluations with each person, each council person's evaluations. And if you have any questions, we're happy to talk about those. You're, you're not on.
How come we've never had the mayor be part of the, of it?
I was, I was not told to do that. I was told to facilitate it, but I-
I mean, I just-
This is my second time of doing it.
Well, the mayor is not one of the hiring.
You think that's the reason?
I guess.
But she has to work. I mean, she works pretty closely, but I just, I just, it was a question. I, I don't-
I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Listen, I'm okay to facilitate too, but and be that, that bridge between because I'm happy to, to help support any way that I can possibly do. Is there any other questions that anybody has for?
I would just like to say thank you. And I would like to just point out that I guess I know from experience that this can be a difficult job. And I made comments in my evaluation. Specifically referring to the aftermath of Hurricane Milton. And I think that the city manager did an extremely professional job and met with city council members, met with staff, met with citizens, met with county people, met with state people, met with probably federal people. And I, I think that his performance during that time was exceptional. And I just want to note that, you know, it's hard day to day to always be the best you can be, but you know, I think when we needed his leadership the most, we got it. So I would just like to congratulate him on that. And, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. And I think that came across and, and he understood that, that we certainly appreciate appreciated all that he did in the wake of hurricane.
Hopefully we'll never have to go through that again.
And Mr. President, I could just say, I had sat down with the city manager and went over mine prior to turning it in. And we had a, it's, it's helpful. And I said, I think I probably need to sit with him once a quarter, just, just to talk. I mean, I'm here. I, I think he did a great job and, and I, my scoring might've been harsh, but I told, I explained to him the reason. And I, and I, I think he was fine with it, but, but I mean, I think Billy's doing a good job for us.
Thank you. But I think we're all in agreement. Did you have anything to say, Councilman Burgess?
No, I just blindsided him and that's, that's good. No, he did. I had the same comments about the, during the hurricane, the emergency management time. Yeah.
Well, Billy, you're doing a good job. We appreciate it.
Thank you. So I will continue to work on the areas that are strengths and I'll work to improve the weaknesses. And thank you for the kind words about the natural or the hurricane response. But I had a great team. So it made it a lot easier for me to be able to make the responses and be in front of people when I wasn't having to worry about, are we going to get the trees removed? How are we dealing with the water? So, you know, having a great team behind, behind me was the biggest part of that. So thanks to everybody that, on the team that helped.
I also want to add one thing. As we were at Florida League of Cities last two weeks ago, we saw that a lot of communities didn't fare as well and city managers didn't fare as well throughout that. So we're very lucky that we were able to come through that as well as we did. And that's because we do have a great team. So thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, we will move on to the consent agenda items. We have one through seven consent agenda items. We can pass them all at once or we can pull any for discussion. Give it to the council.
Can I just ask a question about one?
Sure.
Before, on the new board members, those people have been contacted.
Yes, sir. Everybody who is currently a board member have been contacted and all but one decided to continue on.
Okay, thank you. I move I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving forward to the finance director's report. Ted?
Yes, thank you. Ted Beeson, Finance Director for the city. Located within your packet is a discussion of our fund balance policy. The staff asked that you would go ahead and set a fund balance policy of 25% of operating expenditures in the general fund and the same with the water and sewer fund. We're doing this in preparation to be rated on the city for possible debt issuance for bonds. 25% is a good rule of thumb to say that we're going to be able to function for three months, be able to have reserves in place to do that in the case of a Milton or another emergency. So the staff recommends that. And then with the debt issuance policy or debt policy, we go ahead and set some parameters there to say it would be 10% of general fund revenues would be what our debt payments could be and include Penny for Pasco in that mix. So that would be $2.6 million that we could make for debt service payments coming up for this next fiscal year. That would be general guideline. And it is a general rule at 10%. The absolute limit would be 15% for our debt service payments and that would be $4 million.
Thank you.
Mr. President. And Ted, I, I know we have some debt on this building here, right?
Correct.
That was Penny. That, that's Penny pledge, right? That was Penny money?
That's correct. It is pledged specifically for Penny.
And then the general fund was what we're using to collateralize the bond issue we're looking to do?
Actually, it would be all non ad verum and we could look for Penny for Pasco for a portion of that. But we can't specifically pledge that and saying that's, that's how we're going to totally do the bond issue.
So you say it's not ad verum that we're pledging?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Non ad verum revenues. When you get into ad verum revenues, then you're to trip to the election to go ahead and have voters have approval on that.
Oh, okay.
So non ad verum.
I, I got you. That's the reason that you, you don't pledge it is because it would have to be something approved by the voters then.
Correct.
Okay.
Ted, so what you're saying is that with this policy, we have to say that we will have 2.6 million available to repay the bond?
We say that, yes, we can't go ahead and have debt service payments that'll go above 2.6 million. And as Councilman Smith pointed out, about 600,000 is what our current payments are on this building. Okay, so we would have about 2.2 million dollars that we can go ahead and pledge up as a general rule. But we have up to $4 million in capacity at a 15%.
So that, just clarify, that's strictly the general fund. Right? What we're talking about, the 2.6 is the general fund. That does not take into account the utilities fund, airport fund, sanitation fund.
The 2.6 would be general fund, 10% of general fund revenues and Penny for Pasco.
Right, right. I just wanted to clarify that, that it's, we're talking about general funds specifically and not the other, the enterprise funds.
Okay, but the enterprise funds will be paying towards that bond issue as well.
Correct. Yes.
Right. But the under, underpinnings is the general, general government. Okay, right. Any other questions?
Depends, depends on the portions of the project.
Right, percentage, yeah.
Yes. So city yard, yes. Zephyr Park, no.
Right. Sanitation though too, right?
Yeah.
Sanitation, water, sewer.
City yard.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I, I'll just entertain questions. I think I-
Do we have any more questions for Ted? No, I think you answered them all. Thank you, Ted. Do you need a motion?
I would love a motion. I move that we approve the fund balance and debt policies.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
And now the planning director's report.
Good evening, Council. William McCaw, Planning Department. Before you, today is the planning report for the Advent Health rezoning. They are looking to rezone the 23 approximate acres to the east of the Advent Health Hospital where it currently is. The property is zoned PUD in R4 and they're looking to rezone it to C3. Currently, the site is just overflow parking. There's a community garden on the site and there a pretty significant amount of trees on the eastern side, but there's also a pretty significant amount of fall on the eastern side. So those are the main environmental concerns that I would say for this site as it is. The, there was no site plan submitted with this one yet as they're still working on design. My understanding is the plan for the property is to have support commercial use for the hospital, whether that's additional medical offices as well as parking. As you can see in the aerial here, right where the cutout for the trees are, there is a pretty significant amount of parking already there where it's just overflow parking for the people working at the hospital. And the plan is to expand that. Just to the north of those vehicles, you can see that square is about a acre, maybe a half acre park. It's a community garden currently that's being maintained. I've spoken with the applicant and about potentially preserving that community garden or relocating it on the site in exchange for some of the preservation of trees. Instead, they would preserve the community garden as it's an asset for the hospital as well as surrounding community. And there's no motion at the time, but the applicant is here to make a presentation if you'd like one.
Sure. That'd be great. If you'd state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Tom Skarsky, Certified Planner with RVI Planning, and I'm a resident of Sarasota County. As mentioned, we're here to discuss the Advent Health Expansion Rezone to C3. The applicant is Florida Hospital Zephyr Hills Advent, Adventist Health System. Our land use attorney is Barbara Willhite. Civil engineer is Jeremy Fireline. Transportation consultant, Steve Henry. Environmental consultants, Carrie McNutt. And then for the land planner, as I mentioned, my name's Tom Skarsky with RVI Planning. Staff mentioned the site is approximately 23 acres. It is the area outlined in red here on the, on the aerial map before you. The existing Advent Health site is to the west outlined in yellow. The red site is made up of four parcels and is north of Dodery Road and east of Dairy Road. The current zoning of the property is PUD and multifamily residential four. And the proposed rezone would be to C3, Commercial 3, to allow for the hospital support uses. As staff mentioned, there's no immediate plan for the redevelopment, but it would be utilized for support parking for the hospital site. The slide before you shows the, the infrastructure availability for traffic and utilities as well as that the fire and EMS site and police are served by Pasco County and Zephyr Hills respectively. The future land use of the site is split. It's mixed use and public, semi-public. C3, Commercial 3 is an implementing zone district of those future land use designations. And this slide before you shows some of our comprehensive plan consistency. Just a few of the standout that we selected were goal LU1, the economic diversified tax base. It is consistent with this, which would allow for maintaining the family oriented character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Well expected to generate expanded tax base with it being a hospital use. Objective LU1 through 2, the integrity and quality of life by enhancing the quality of life for the hospital services for the residential community. Policy ECO 111, job creation with the additional jobs that would come from the expansion of the hospital. And objective ECO 14, the land use allocation for commercial, industrial and conservation space by creating more conservation space, which would lead for the expansion in the future. Overall, we did receive approval, recommendation of approval from staff. The board gave a unanimous approval as well at Planning Commission. And we are looking to enhance the site for the quality of life of residents of the city of Zephyr Hills, generate significant employment opportunities as well. And we are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the LDC. And we do have our, our team here for any questions that you may have.
Councilman Smith? Yes. Hey, thank you. Thank you for the presentation too. Under the PUD, current zoning, you wouldn't be able to do what you want to do? I mean, I, I would think it would be medical use.
The current PUD doesn't have an approved site plan with it that staff is able to find. And so we're looking to rezone it for, or more conventional zone district to allow for the development under the C3 development regulations.
And, and I just asked the staff to give me this, what's allowable in C3. It's hotel, automobile service, automobile vehicle sales and rentals, car washing detail, gasoline service station, heavy- gasoline service station, heavy vehicle equipment repair, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, and my thinking is I don't think any of those that I just read would be compatible with the hospital.
For the existing PD?
Well, I mean, that's the C3 allowable, what's allowable in the C3 zoning is what I had. So, I mean, if we do rezone this, those uses could be placed on that property, correct?
Medical office and the commercial parking is planned for the future.
Then why wasn't it be just OP or you amend the PUD?
Well. Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
I think the hospital's C3, and that's a permitted use in the C3. So I think the concern is, I had the same concern. I asked the city manager. I said, when, when I talked to him today about, you know, you could have a car lot there. And I'm sure you're not, well, you're going to have a parking lot, but I meant like a car sales.
Sure, sure.
I'm sure that's not what you have in mind, but I guess is, is there a way to narrow the focus of what you want to put in there so we can kind of feel a little better about rezoning it?
Good evening. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Richie. What we do sometimes in other jurisdictions is we maybe can deed restrict some of those uses. If that makes the council feel, you know, like you have a little better idea of what can't happen there. I mean, the zoning was chosen as C3 because that's what the rest of the hospital is. But if there's some uses, I mean, hearing your concern, obviously, this is the planning report. You still have to direct your staff to advertise our public hearing. We can talk to staff about perhaps some indeed restricting some of those uses out that we don't intend to do and that you might have a concern over. That is a tool that usually works pretty well, and we'd be happy to go through that process between now and your first public hearing.
Well, yeah, because when I started reading those off, I mean, that concerns me. And I know what the intent is, but we've seen a lot of times somebody be intent on doing something, the property get rezoned, and it changes hands, and guess what? It's whatever is allowable on it.
Understood. Understood. I understand the concern.
Is the PD on this one like the other piece where there's no plan attached to it? It is?
The other, if I may, the other question I have is you mentioned that you want to do some overflow parking, I guess. Would that be a paved parking and improved parking lot? Because currently it's not, and that really doesn't meet our codes for parking lots.
My understanding, it's got to go through site plan to be formally approved and approved and improved.
Okay, because you can see in the picture that it's kind of a dirt lot right now. And that's because it's kind of been an informal thing that, you know, we didn't really look at, but.
We'll be required to actually do a site plan now and improve.
Okay.
So it meets your standards.
All right.
So that's a benefit as well. This done. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? We don't need a motion on this, do we?
No, no motion, but if there are uses that you want restrictions on, we would like direction on that. So I can get with Barbara this week, and we can talk about it.
Well, I think quite a few of the things that were on that list.
Yeah, I mean, I just consider that it's going to be expansion of the hospital, not a heavy equipment facility. So as long as we could narrow it down to ancillary uses of the hospital or hospital type. I mean, I think that, and just like you said about narrowing it, that would be awesome.
Absolutely understand.
Thank you.
Perfect. I know we can come up with, I'm kind of doing this for 30 years. I can kind of read where you're coming from. When you look at that list, I look at it and go, so we'll come up with something.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Is that it for the planning director, I believe? We'll move to the mayor's announcements.
You don't have to have any.
What? So, yeah, I just had a couple of things on my list. He noted on the back, we have a resident over in Betmar that's turning 100 that we're doing a proclamation for on Saturday. I'll be doing that for her. And I like those kind of things. It's very rare that we come up with a 100-year-old person. So I wanted to recognize her. We didn't ask her to come here because, yeah, felt like it was. The chamber banquet is this week on Thursday night. The chamber banquet is Thursday night. Do we know who's going? Anybody know who's going?
Yeah, Ricardo knows. Ricardo had a list.
You got a list?
I have a list. In my folder.
And your table, and the table's full.
Excuse me.
Table's full, right?
Not quite.
Table's not full. So can we, if the table's not full, can we?
I know I'm going.
I'm going. Steve's going to drive me. He's my date.
Right? Yeah.
If not.
Where's it going to be held at?
It's at Dan Cannon in Dade City.
Okay.
And at the Dan Cannon at 6:00 PM. Am I correct? Yep. Vicki left, so. Our youth council normally would meet next week, which is Labor Day, so we're not going to. So my, I guess I want to ask you guys, on the 8th, could we meet? If I met with the youth council before on the 8th, would that work or is that too much?
We have that 5:45 CRA meeting.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we're going to have to find a whole different.
I mean, if we're doing what, my suggestion, if we're doing the CRA and it's one item and it's simply the re-roof item, it'll take five minutes. We can do it at 6:00. Take five minutes and move right into the next item.
Okay.
You can just notice both meetings at 6:00 and just do them back to back.
Okay, all right. I just, we didn't get to have a meeting for the last two months, so they're anxious to meet. So I just want to give them a date. And then my last thing is Habitat East Pasco is doing what's called a women's build. And we haven't had those very often, and it's going to be a great little event. And I'd love for some of our women from the city hall to come and be a part of that, if that's a possibility. That hopefully Billy can help with that, if so, if I can put that out for them. Okay, it's kind of a fun little thing that we're going to be doing. We, I don't think we're going to be having a house to build, but we're going to be doing service on some of the houses that are out there. So, okay. I think that's all I have. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City managers announcements.
I have a couple, couple items. First off, we had a job fair. HR held a job fair on, when, was it Wednesday? Yeah, Wednesday. We had over 100 applicants, our applications submitted. So we, HR's going through those, pushing them to the appropriate departments. Hopefully, we can fill some of the open vacant positions that we have. Our water use permit is on the SWIFTMUD agenda for tomorrow. It's on consent. So hopefully it's approved. We'll find out tomorrow afternoon. Also, just so you know, Newport Richie sent us a thank you note for hosting the MAP meeting. And so I wanted to pass that along to council. And then the Abbott Square, they're moving forward. I know I sent an update today. The construction group mobilized on Beverly Hills Drive. That's the area between about six houses that they're going to have to rip up the road, put in new curb inlets and some piping and raise and repave the roadway. So the contractor mobilized on that. Matt and Todd and I met with Mr. Melquit on Wednesday. He pointed out to discuss, sorry, we met on Wednesday virtually to discuss some of the road paving, curb inlets. Or excuse me, not curb inlets, the curb and gutter, the buffer area and some trees that need to be planted. Or for the last two Wednesdays, correct. This past Wednesday, he came back with a map that pointed out additional curbs that needed to be replaced that Mr. Almedia had pointed out. So they have gone out to five contractors now to get pricing on that. What they said was they're not worried about the pricing. They're worried about who can do the job the quickest and the best. So they're hoping to have those bids back, I think, in the next couple of weeks and get that part of the project moving forward. So it's moving. I know there was a conversation about, you know, pulling the bond and all that. But we have Mr. Melquit on the case now or on the issue. So he's addressing it and moving things forward. So the heavy equipment is out there. I took pictures of it. I did not send it to you yet, but the equipment is on site, sitting in the middle of the road, and the road is combed off. So any questions on that?
Have you heard from that resident that's been coming in?
I have not.
Have we contacted him or?
I have not reached out to him. And I don't know, I see Todd shaking his head no as well.
Well, let's let them do their thing since they're there.
Yeah, like I said, they're, they're working on it. We meet with them every Wednesday. And then we ask him every Friday to send us an update, you know, for the week. And so we asked him specifically, because we had a meeting this evening, to give us a, you know, a more recent update. And the update was they were mobilizing this morning, so they are on site and moving forward.
Good news. Is that it?
That is it. If there's no further questions.
Seeing none, I will move on to the city attorney's announcements.
I'll just state, since we talked about this just, you know, Billy just talked about this, and we talked about it last meeting is, you know, I've been involved with those conversations through their attorney, and then we got somebody with Lennar that's a little more attentive. I feel comfortable with their understanding of the level of severity of our desire to have the things fixed. And I've been satisfied with seeing the efforts and since these last two weeks have gone by, since the first time we met with him, the action taken seems sufficient. So I would recommend that we just continue course with this and reevaluate. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. City council comments. I'll start with Councilman Smith.
Thank you. And I should have put this under the city managers. I'm sorry. On one of the noted items, I just wanted to ask a question. It's that Benish contract.
The Benish.
Bennett Benash, I have to say. Number three, Economic Summit presentation. What is that?
So part of that is Todd has been asked to present at the Economic Summit, the annual summit that's held by ZEDC.
Right.
The Chamber. So that is for Todd to utilize them for some of the information for his presentation, not ZEDC's.
Thank you for clarification. Yeah, that's, that's what my question was about. And really, I only have two other statements, I guess. We went to the League of Cities Conference, and I went to a couple of very interesting sessions, I thought. Let me get my notes in front of me. Oh, I guess I went past them. One of them was, I need to have this because I want to get it straight. One of them was a Florida Doge, okay? This guy, Eric Soskin, he's the head of the Florida Doge team, very intelligent guy. And he basically lectured us how the Florida Doge was going to go to municipalities and counties and seek out wasteful spending in municipalities, and already started to working. He said that they were looking for some fraud, cases of fraud, and if we weren't truthful, that the FDLE would be involved. The tone of the lecture was more punitive than we're trying to help you. I personally took offense to it, to be quite honest with you. He's been in the state for three months. I think that we, our city, our staff knows how to spend the money wisely. The only problem that scares me is you could very well come in and say, well, you're spending $30 million on your bond issue. Well, you have a city yard that's functioning fine, and you have a park that's functioning fine. Why do you need that? And I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you that don't think that they couldn't come here and say that. So I think we know more than they do what our community needs, but I'm just, that's what I got from that session. A sense of unease is what I got. The other thing, and I hate to be the bearer of mad news, guys, but the next item was the ad valorem tax exemption. This is going to go to a committee in the 2026 session. And there were two things being talked about. One was the elimination of ad valorem taxes on homestead property or a super exemption of $500,000 or $1 million on homesteaded property. Talking to the city manager just a little bit, that ad valorem is about 50% of our general fund budget. If we just conservatively say 50% of it's gone, that's about 28% revenue shortfall in this year. So, I mean, and here's the kicker on the whole thing. The committee that's meeting is looking to have an amendment put on the ballot for 2026. So if you don't think, if it gets on the ballot, what do y'all think's going to happen? It's going to pass by 80%, okay? So I'm just saying that, just, just so you're aware, okay? I think there's going to be a bunch of pushback by county. I don't know what's going to go on with our schools if something like that should happen. But I'm a little concerned about it if they're talking about putting it on the ballot. Because if that did go through, then in 2027, we'd have to be looking to cut 25%, roughly 25, 28% of our general fund items. So just be aware that the League of Cities is saying we need to tell the message. I say we need to find a way to stop it in the courts, but we'll see what plays out.
So if I can just tag on to that, I did meet with, I say, I met and the other elected officials throughout the county, school board, property praiser, I think I sent this to each of you. But we met with Rep. Maggard, and he wanted to hear what the impacts were going to be to all the constitutionals, to all the cities, the sheriff, the county. So we had an hour-long meeting. It's, it's pretty bad if it was to pass. So, you know, Representative Maggard is the only legislator that I know at this time that's got the group together and said, how will this impact you? So he's taking it serious and getting information so that he can take it back and really push that information or push that, you know, what the impact is to the local.
And I think we probably need to talk about it in realistic terms. So maybe if chief had 28% of his budget cut, that when you call, your response time's going to be 15 minutes. You know, 20 minutes. Maybe our library is cut back to weekends. I mean, this is, I mean, this is real. It's not, it's not something that's, may happen. It's going, they're pushing it through. So reach out to our elected officials and let them know how devastating this would be to our community. The other thing that's bad about it is there was no, they looked at nothing that's going to supplant the loss of revenue. There was no talk about that whatsoever. So again, I don't want to be a downer, but I think we need to be aware of this. And I think we need to reach out, because if it gets on the ballot, it's going to pass.
Right. Anything else?
That's it. That's enough.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman. I have nothing to know. Thank you.
I just wanted to say at that same conference we went to that the city manager, another thing, I don't know if he realized that we were watching, but I've seen him interacting with other city managers, with some of the, you know, vendors and different people that, you know, to help him help the city. So I've seen you doing that extensively and going to some of those same work sessions that Councilman Smith was talking about. And yes, we do have to get that message out because it could be potentially devastating. So that's all I have.
Well, like Councilman Smith said, it would be devastating to our budget. We would have to look for new revenue, and that could be difficult. And I would also like to thank everyone that we participated in Billy's evaluation. I personally, I think he's doing a great job, and I appreciate his hard work. I think we all, none of us like criticism, but sometimes a little criticism gets us moving forward in a better direction. So I appreciate all your hard work. And nothing else. I'm going to close the meeting.
I have to point out our new. I have to point out, our new code enforcement officer has been sitting in the audience today with his boss. So welcome to the meeting.
What's his name?
Steven Page.
Well, welcome, Steven.
His boss's name, I don't know.
Sarah, welcome.
Appreciate you coming to the meeting. And on that note, I'm going to close the meeting. We'll take five minutes, and then we will move forward on the budget. No, budget, but yeah.
You get me, boy.
This three. All right, good evening. Welcome to the Monday. Thank you. Welcome to the Monday, August 25th, 2025, 7:00 PM, city council workshop on the budget. And Ricardo, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Lance Smith. Stephen Spina.
Here.
Jody Wilkerson. Kenneth Burgess.
Here.
Charles Proctor.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Maggard.
All right, we have one item on the workshop tonight, and I guess I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Okay, so this is an update from the changes from the last workshop that we had. Sorry. So the total budget is $135,911,380. Got it? Yeah, all right. Changes since the October 11th workshop, ad valorem remain the same, millage remain the same. Added $10,000 to U Sports. All right, sorry, I skipped one. The personnel request, we removed the new sergeant position that was, had been requested. We added 10,000 into the U Sports. We lowered the utility admin professional services by 34,000. Made changes to the personnel services listed on the next slides. So as you can see here, the council budget went down by 29, almost $29,000. Admin went up by three. Finance went up. HR increased slightly, planning slightly increased, and those are all because of the raises. The police, that number went up quite a bit, about $40,000. What was not included is that, if you remember the step plan and the percentage that officers receive on October 1st, that was not in the previous budget. So that was added into this. That in conjunction with the reduction or the removal of the sergeant position resulted in this number. The public service operators, right, that's the title, public service, just slight decrease. You see for building, library, all the departments here. Any questions?
I don't see any.
Continued personnel changes, the CRA, again, slide increase. Not sure what the slide. What's that? I'm sorry. Oh, that's all for utility, okay, I'm sorry. So this is the utility portion, the administration, the utility fund. The administration portion went up slightly. Again, all of these are slight increases. The water, wastewater, excuse me. No, yeah, these are all based on salary increases. Same with the airport, airport slightly reduced or significantly reduced. There's an open position that was pushed until April, until mid-year. So that's why you see that big drop there. And then sanitation, they pushed a, so the salary increases went in, but then there's also a vehicle that was pushed to fiscal year '27. So that's why the decrease there. Capital listings, other changes. So the CRA, CRA Board or CRA Commission heard these earlier today, but the Eighth Street and Oak Side improvements, those funds were anticipated to be spent this fiscal year. They will not be expended until next fiscal year, so we had to roll those forward to next year. So that was an increase of 600,000. The renovation to Clock Plaza, we increased by $240,000. The park signage was, again, was another project that was anticipated, is out to bid currently, but the funds in the contract or contract will not be signed and executed until next fiscal year. So that project will roll forward. The depot parking lot construction, same thing as the two previous projects. Excuse me, that was anticipated to be completed this year, or at least started, the construction started. We're still in design. I think we're pretty close. We're working on the final permits through SWIFT MUD. We should have those, I think, shortly. But again, we won't have enough time to have that bid and executed prior to October 1st so that those funds roll forward. And then the sanitation, unfortunately, there was a crash between the last workshop and now, and so we have to purchase a vehicle. So there was an additional $44,000 for a vehicle purchase for sanitation. Not our fault, but unfortunately, we don't think we'll get the full amount to pay for the vehicle. The CIP, and this was the three-quarter ton truck and sanitation, and that is pushed until 2027. So that accounts for the decrease in the sanitation department. These are the budget reserve changes. You see the contingency for the general fund decreased by $20,000. The general fund balance reserved, reserve, excuse me, went down about $110,000. Paying for Pasco went down 600,000, CRA fund, instead of having, it went down to zero. So it was a reduction of 993. The CRA is not supposed to carry a fund balance. So that's the reason, there are some allocations, different allocations to different projects. Those funds can be moved if we see something else come up, another project comes up, but they need to be allocated to a specific project. The utility fund decreased by, what's that, $350,000? And that was for the allocation of the debt service for the city yard, the utility portion of that.
Billy, can I ask you, I'm sorry. Those are reserve requirements that we talked about at the meeting. Is this going to satisfy those, Ted, or is that not? Okay, and is that, I mean, when we have those, does that, is that carried? I mean, I know we don't really have a balance sheet, but is that carried on a line? I mean, how is that carried on our books?
Just in case Speaker didn't pick it up, the answer was yes. The general fund contingency and the utility fund, fund balance covers the 25% requirement.
At the end of the fiscal year, the auditors come in and look at our books, and then that's when fund balance is calculated. And that's always in the audit report, undesignated fund balance and the general fund. And the same would be net assets or unreserved in the utility fund.
So it's the carryforward type balance?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and I thought that was it, but I didn't know if, when we put that in, if we had to have another designation, so we just carry it in the carryforward balances that we carry?
Technically, on the audit, it's undesignated.
Undesignated, okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ted.
Sorry, airport fund went up slightly. Again, position. And then the sanitation fund slightly went up as well, and that was a result of the vehicle. Those are the changes from the last meeting. We have a balanced budget at the moment. So if there are no, if there's any questions, I'll answer questions. We can schedule another meeting if needed. If not, the next meeting, or sorry, the first reading of the millage and tentative budget would be September 8th, followed by a second reading of the millage and final budget for on September 22nd.
May I have any questions? I do. So you said that all these numbers now include the 5% salary increase.
Yes, sir.
Or six, what is it?
Six.
6%?
Yes, sir.
And then 6%.
Yeah, you're really scared some of them people.
It started at 5, I forgot that.
Yes, this includes, this includes the increase that was requested by council at last meeting.
All right, and then is there, I guess, the police department, we still have one unit to?
We're still working on the officer's agreement.
So you probably have some funds in there to cover whatever happens?
There are funds in there to cover what has been offered to them.
Okay. That's all I have, I think. Oh, on the depot parking lot, if that starts October 1st, if we have that event in March, that'll be done by then, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that shouldn't be a very long project.
All right.
I hope.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any more questions about the budget? Looks like.
Let me, and I should have said, can you back up to the very first? And I think I know the answer, I just. One more, right there. Where on the revenue side, the bond is in the budget carryover, is that right?
I'll, yes, I'll let finance here.
I just figured, where is it at, Jessica? I know it's got to be in there.
Jessica Carter, Assistant Finance Director. So it's actually in transfers in category.
Oh, it's in a transfer.
I know, I wish the categories could be a little bit different, but according to the accounting principles, you get these weird categories, and then they lump a bunch of stuff in there. So it doesn't really pull it out. So we are using fund balance to pay for part of the project. So you're not going to see a straight $31 million as a transfer in, because we will be spending down our fund balance in the general fund and in the utility fund.
And I noticed in the budget also, there was some debt service on, it looked like, I'm assuming it was debt service for the bond when it's issued, like 679 something?
Correct, yeah. So right now, that's kind of our anticipated payment. Once we have final numbers, you know, we might be able to adjust it a little bit. But that is our anticipated principal and interest payment that we could potentially need to pay back sooner than later.
When do we think that bond would come during the year?
Closing, I believe, was December? Late November and December, we could potentially be getting the funds. So then it's just depending on how quickly are they going to slide us into an amortization schedule and when that first payment will be due. So we're kind of trying to tentatively prepare to already make a first payment back in fiscal 2026.
And from what I understand, it's not like a construction loan on a house. You draw the whole amount of the bond issue is given to you. You put it in some type of investment, very safe, that gives a little interest to offset the interest you're paying. The funds are not going to be expended until a couple of years, probably, right? I mean, the city yard. I mean, two years, if you think we'll do, I mean, I don't, I don't even know about two years, to be quite honest with you. I think they had. You think? So it'll be drawn down over that, over that time period?
Yep, it'll be just like, I envisioned it being just like our ARPA funds. When they gave us $8.2 million and it just appeared in our account, and they said, thank you, have a nice day, and we quickly moved it over to an investment account, and it sat there earning interest, and then we just drew down on it as we made the actual payments. So as we wrote a check, we pulled that same amount in, you know, just to offset it every time. So it was an in and an out.
Okay, well, I sure appreciate it.
No problem.
The, if I may, the ad valorem taxes, is the 12 million a little high?
On the ad valorem?
And revenues?
So that also includes not just the general fund, so that's all taxes. So that also includes CRA as well.
Okay.
So there's a portion that goes over to the CRA. So this is a summary of the entire city overall. So this includes all the enterprise funds, includes CRA. So the ad valorem is not just the general fund, that'll include CRA.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jessica.
No problem.
Any more questions on the budget? Yeah. Well, it looks like we can move forward with this.
If there are no questions, I will plan on bringing the budget back to council on September 8th, which will be the first reading of the tentative budget and the tentative millage, with the second reading being of the final budget, final millage, final budget on September 22nd. If there's any changes between now and then, I'll bring those back to council as well.
Can I just make one quick comment, it's got to do with the budget? But the new system here, is it, can we use a wireless microphone with this system too? Only reason I say this because sometimes we ask some questions over there, the simple yes or no, or maybe five words, and we make them come up to the podium, and they can just answer it there and be on the record. I know sometimes we need to call them up and pepper them with questions, but as long as we can just have a wireless microphone for simple questions.
Yes, we've had a conversation about, I mean, I don't know if you've noticed on the front of the dais here, there's outlets on both sides. The idea is we might get a table or two that sit on each side that staff can sit at, that we know, like.
We'll put them right front and center?
Right, that way they can just answer. The ones who know they're going to be on, Todd's not allowed up here, though.
Poor Todd. Well, do we have any more questions? Seeing none, I will close this meeting. Thank you all.